I'd like to call to order regular meeting of the Marine City Commission for Thursday, December 3rd, 7:00 PM. Let's start out with a prayer from Reverend Rooney and we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance. Everyone rise please.
Teddy Roosevelt was a man who had a reputation for being frank and direct and in 1900, the year before he entered the White House, he wrote these words. "No community is healthy where it is ever necessary to distinguish one politician from his fellows because he's honest. Moreover, is not enough that public officials should be honest. No amount of honesty will avail if he or she is not also brave and wise. The weakling and the coward cannot be saved by honesty alone. Leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient: honesty and courage. All of you have earned the right to be here today by winning the trust of the people of this city. But along with that honor also comes a duty of humility, integrity, and public service." So let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of this city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and the dignity of those with whom we disagree and to treat all peoples, no matter how weak, how poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, loving God, renew us with the spirit of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of human persons. We remember especially this night those who were murdered in San Bernardino, in Atlanta, and the child that was mauled to death in Detroit. We ask all this in the name of the loving God who lives and reigns forever and ever.
Bunch of agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hold call please.
Commissioner Beatty.
President.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Lovett.
Here.
Commissioner Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Mayor Lovett.
Here.
Okay. Look for a motion to excuse the mayor.
Make a motion to excuse Mayor Skudarczyk.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So excused. Brings us to Communications, which we have none. That leads us to Public Comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission, please stand at the mic and state your name and address and please limit your comments to five minutes. Anyone? No? All right. Takes us to item six, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda to include the setting a date for PA 33 election, which would be 10B, and set a special meeting and public hearing for amendments to Tifa 2 and Tifa 3, which would be Agenda Item 10C.
Support.
Motion is support. Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda has been amended. Brings us to item seven, approval of the minutes for our regular meeting of November 19th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the City Commission regular meeting of November 19th, 2015.
We have motion, support. Questions or comments? Yes.
I'd like to point out the need for a correction. I very seldom see my name and the word astute in the same paragraph. Maybe it should be austere. It's on page four.
I will make a correction.
Thank you.
You can blame it on spell correcting software. Although it could be true. All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move. Brings us to item eight, consent agenda. We have 8A, which is a schedule for all the meetings for 2016. 8B, business license application for Marine City Music and Collectibles, 302 Southwater Street. 8C, business license application, Good Natureed Gardens, 312 Southwater Street. This is a reopening. And 8D, special event permit for antiques, outboard motors, and antique wooden boat show, which is going to be held at, where?
Nautica Mile.
Nautica Mile, on May 7th.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and placement file.
Support.
Support. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Let's see. So the new stuff we're sticking in here.
We have 10A.
Would this be?
This is 10A.
Right.
And then this is B and C.
Okay. So these are both new items then?
Right.
So we have no unfinished business?
No.
Okay. 10A, new business. Cancellation of January 7th meeting?
This is something that apparently has customarily been done in the past, usually because it's landed a little bit closer to New Year's Day. I leave this up to you, should you choose to cancel it or not?
Okay, as I said, this is like a week after, but.
I don't know if maybe you want to discuss if everybody's going to be, or enough people will be around to have quorum?
Do you have enough time to put a packet together?
Yeah.
That's usually when the issue is.
That's usually the case. You don't have time to get it together and get it out.
Because of the holidays the week before, there's not typically a lot of new items.
I'll be around.
Oh, boy. Not a party girl. Work schedule also, it would make sense to give yourself a little more time to get into that.
I mean, this is entirely up to us.
Okay, I make a motion that we cancel the January 7th, 2016 meeting.
Okay.
Support.
We have motion and support. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Meeting's canceled.
You get out of here.
Okay. That brings us to 10B, I guess would be the first item you have here on tonight's revised agenda, set date for PA 33 election.
So on November 24th, the governor signed into law House Bill, I think it's 4904, which allows local initiatives to be on the presidential primary ballot. This is something that was not an option when we got the petitions and we're considering doing the PA 33 at the May election. Our charter does have language in it that addresses if we get petitions, it should be at the next election. Whether that's the portion of the law we should be following or not isn't really clear. I spoke with Mr. Downey on this and he thinks probably better to lean towards the safe side of this. I know that the school is also having a special election tonight. This could potentially be an item that they might add to their agenda and possibly move to the March election. If that was the case, then that would potentially leave us in a position where we're the only ones with anything on the ballot in May. So we would be unfortunately carrying the whole election costs. So, yeah.
The message that came along with this has the rules for the various elections. The March 8th election has requirement that petitions to place proposals on ballot filed with county and local clerks by December 1st. We don't have that, do we?
We got those petitions quite a while ago.
But are they, do we meet the requirement? Are they filed with the local clerk?
Yes.
Okay, then that's.
They can, August or something.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, just based on our charter language, it really seems like this is the appropriate thing to do. It seems like there's not a lot of gray area there and I think even if there was gray area, I think this is an issue that we want to come to some form of resolution on sooner than later. That March election hits us right about the time we start thinking budget for next year. I think that's, that's an important time. Budget's always an important consideration and I think, you know, that's an important thing to have resolved at that point as well.
That's a good point. Yes, Commissioner Hendrick.
I'm concerned with this wording that he put on here. It says, "Should the city of Marine City spread and distribute a special assessment levy of 3.045 mils on the special assessment district to defray the cost necessary to continue maintenance of police and fire protection as result by the commission." Do they understand it's the entire, the special assessment district is the entire community? I mean, it's kind of.
This was language that he pulled from the resolution. That's something that I can have him include in that for the ballot. As I mentioned in the memo to you, it does not need to be approved by the commission. It needs to be submitted to the clerk by the 15th.
Of what?
For, the 15th of December.
So this is it? This is what's going to need to admit?
Unless you choose to change it. We can certainly take any recommendations for verbiage. I think I do agree, and that was actually something that I had kind of taken issue with when I got this from him as well, is that it should probably mention in there that it is citywide.
Well, also, it just says 3.04 and I thought it said this can go up to 5 mils in the proposal. And it doesn't say that it's for three years either, or how many years it is, three or five years or whatever it was. I don't have the original paperwork, but it doesn't tell them how long it is either. So there's a lot of holes here.
I thought that it had to be voted on yearly.
It does, but.
Well, then.
You're still not telling them that it's going for three to five years and you're not telling them that it can go up to that. You're not telling them anything. They don't know. How do you vote on that with you don't know how long it's going to go for? It's still going to go for multiple years even though you have to vote on it every year? It's still either, it was, what did we do, three, what was it, five, three? I can't remember.
Five.
Five. So this goes for five years and it doesn't tell them it's for five years? So, to me, there's an awful lot of holes in this that I think they're not going to understand.
It has to be submitted by the 15th, so.
Correct.
There's still some time to correct the wording if we want to.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
So tonight you're looking for this board to tell you whether we should go through this election time.
Really, yeah, at this point, looking for the term. Given your concerns, I can certainly work with Jim Downey on refining the language and adding some of the more important details to this. I'm not sure, because it doesn't have to come to City Commission for approval for the language on the ballot, if maybe, you know, we just have a little subcommittee of maybe three members, take a quick look at it, review it, see if there's anything else for consideration, or if you just want me as the city manager to work with the attorney on this.
I would think the basic questions that have been brought up tonight that you're aware of, so I think you would be able to go ahead and meet with the, my feeling would be meet with the lawyer now and go ahead with, you know, knowing the extension, you know, the time limits and that it's the whole city and I don't know what else you would want to add.
I sort of think that would be important, the concerns Commissioner Hendrick brought up of the whole city being inclusive, the maximum amount of the mileage and then the length of that. Those are, you know, all important things and I'm always in favor of as clear of a ballot language as possible. So I think that would be in the spirit of that and I would have no problem in amending that to include that. I'd also like, I would move to include the Public Act 33 question on the March 2016 election.
Support.
Okay. So Reverend, go ahead.
Can that be on a contingency, whether or not if the school has the election, you know, in May? If the school board has an election in May, they go through with it?
I think our charter's pretty clear that the next election is March and that's what our charter requires. What if the school district takes another three months to decide when theirs?
They might move theirs up too in the college. You know, everybody, if they find out that they've changed this ruling, the college, everybody might move it up, knowing that they have to have an election on March anyway, so they're all going to be looking to save money.
All right. All right. I just wanted to make sure as long as everybody's on ship, board ship, so.
But I think beyond that, our charter is clear that if that's our next election, that's proper form.
It's just unfortunate that it comes up with such short notice.
Yep.
Right.
But the change was what, just a handful of days ago when they announced this?
Yeah, it was November 24th.
Once again, the state does us no favors.
The clerk gets just bullets in the emails and it was something that she wasn't right on. We had the holiday in there and as soon as she brought it to my attention, we started investigating it.
So you'll send us a revised, whatever you come up with, so we can evaluate it before it goes on there for the 15th?
That might get to be a bit of a slippery slope because then everyone would, in essence, be making a decision outside of a meeting.
I'm not saying make a decision, I'm just saying I'd like to know what it's going to read.
Oh, definitely.
Well, I think we're making the decision tonight, one way or the other. It's a question of the wording, right, the final wording, which you can send that to us and say, this is the proposed final wording. If someone has some heartache with it, they can let you know.
They can just get ahold of me directly. That's fine.
I don't think that we're violating, okay, Open Meetings Act by doing that. We're just, we're making the decision tonight to either go forward or stay with May, so.
Yeah, we've indicated the points in which to include in that.
Right. That's just confirmation of the final language.
Okay.
So, all right, so we have a motion and second. Any further discussion on this? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Go for March. Brings us to your second new agenda item tonight.
It was brought to my attention that the development and plan for Tifa 2 and 3 are set to expire at the end of the year. This was something that was set up with a 30-year term. I think with the change in staffing in the office, nobody really kept track of this unfortunately, so we're in a position where we have a very short timeframe to be able to do anything with this or we will, in essence, be dissolving Tifa 2 and 3. I did speak with a couple of attorneys regarding this and was able to work out a timeframe that we could do an addendum to the Tifa and, in essence, extend it for a certain term. My recommendation is just to extend it for a term to match the Tifa 1 term, which expires just about two years from now, which is December 15th, 2018. That gives more of the public and the boards of Tifa and commission an opportunity to really take a look at Tifa, what their intentions are with it, if they want to move forward with it. And that way, it's not something where we're just losing it here with 30 days and no opportunity to really discuss the situation.
Wouldn't two years be 17?
I can make a motion to extend the Tifa 2 and Tifa 3 terms to match the expiration of Tifa 1, which is December 15th, 2018.
Actually, at this point, all that you need to do is set a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I make a motion to set a special meeting for public hearing for amendment to Tifa 2 and 3.
When?
Support.
You got to say when.
December 29th.
No. Well.
Yeah.
Okay.
On December 29th, 2015.
What time?
At 7:00 PM. I was getting there. I'm slow.
It's all right. So we have a motion. We have second. Second. Motion is second to amend, or, yeah, amendment to extend to Tifa 2 and 3.
Set a public hearing.
To set a public hearing for.
Public hearing.
Discussion of extending Tifas 2 and 3 for December 29th at 7:00 PM. Discussion?
I have one question. You know, in the past, if we were to resolve the three Tifas, there was a financial charge and it was approximately about $169,000 if we dissolved it. But if this wore out its course, is there still a charge of resolving?
It's not so much a charge, it's just that the money that we have in fund balance for the Tifas have to be dispersed between the taxing agencies. So I think there's a little over a million between the two, so the county, the intermediate school district, the community colleges would get their share of the money that's in the Tifa fund balance right now.
Okay. So we don't get it then? We receive.
Essentially, when you're collecting tax, you're collecting for those entities also. In this case, you're setting it aside. It's a special collection, if I understand this correctly.
Yeah, a future capture of those.
Future capture, thank you. Yeah. Since you're not going to be continuing in that fashion, you're essentially giving back what you captured that you normally would have given them.
Now, think of it like a piece of pie. So each organization has a piece of the pie.
Right.
And right now, we actually get the whole pie as Tifa, but if we dissolve Tifa, then everybody gets their piece of the pie.
So then, if we resolved it ourselves, actually, we would have been further off ahead because we get to capture most of the money.
Well, it's like a 30 or 40% get back though, right?
Yeah.
In that neighborhood.
Somewhere between.
That's the advantage of Tifas, that you capture resources you wouldn't normally have.
Right, but what I'm saying is.
I mean, you were on Tifa, I'm not telling you anything you didn't know.
If we resolved it and it was understood that it was going to cost us $169,000 if we resolved all three Tifas, but the rest of the money is ours. That's what I understood it as.
A portion is. We don't have those exact numbers, but in essence, you are correct. There is a portion of money that would be given to other organizations and a portion that would come back to us. And then after the Tifa dissolves, everybody, all the organizations would see higher revenue from the capture.
Well, I think if we go forward with the public hearing, that's definitely something we'll need to have, is those exact numbers captured.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hendrick?
All right. The two Tifas, being there's a million dollars, yes, we'd have to pay some back, but there's also a House bill pending still that may opt, the colleges and the county and all them opt out of these Tifas. And if that's the case, eventually, the Tifas are pointless because we're still going to capture whatever. Between these two, there's a million dollars. We'd probably maybe get maybe $700,000 of that if we disbanded them. All I ever see is that we're not spending these the way they should be spent to fix up the businesses and the residents in those Tifas. I still think we should just dissolve them. This would allow the city to have all that extra money, but I think it's going to be coming anyway. I think if that bill passes because the county wants theirs, the colleges want theirs, if the bill goes through, they'll be able to opt out and then there'll be no point. So it's just a matter of time anyway. I'd say for they're just going to be gone.
Commissioner Simpson.
I know right now we're just discussing the motion, but in general terms, in favor of the extension, because it's brief, it sinks them all up and I'm never in favor of when you have such a big issue regardless of what side you fall on, to have to deal with in one meeting very quickly without advance notice. And I think that's what we're sort of forced in a position to deal with. I think, you know, this discussion, if we were to choose to dissolve, that should be a long discussion with lots of information behind it and a lot of notice so everyone can give in their input. And that, that's why I would be very much in favor of the, the extension just because it, it gives us proper procedure and that. And I think that would, you know, to not have that due diligence, I think would, would do everyone a disservice. That's why in general I would be in favor of that brief extension.
Okay. Commissioner Lovett?
I agree. I think that the, matching it with Tifa 1 makes a lot of sense. If we just go for a year at a time, then we have to have a special hearing, you know, now and a special hearing in the next year and a special hearing the year after that. And this way, we put them all together and at the same time, you know, we're dealing with one hearing at a time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendrick?
The problem, I guess, is that we're cramming this through and we're going to have to have a special meeting on December 29th during the holidays when everybody's busy off doing what they're doing. And I think what's going to happen is people will not be able to attend this meeting because of the date and where it's at. So, yes, you'll have a public hearing, probably no one will show up and then you can say, oh, well, we had it, we had your opportunity. I guess that's my problem with this is I know it's short notice, but to rush this through on December 29th.
But the alternative is they expire without any input, which is tremendously worse in my mind. That's, I don't.
People should have been monitoring this. This has been brought up for years.
I do not disagree at all.
This issue.
That is very frustrating, but I think, I think you somewhat contradict yourself there. To let it go off into the night without any input, I think is very disingenuous.
My point is, yes, I don't have a problem with the public hearing, but what I'm trying to say is you're probably going to get no one to show up because.
At least they have the option to do so. If we don't vote on that, then they have zero opportunity to do that.
And when you're doing it on the holiday time, it's very, very difficult.
And I don't disagree with the timing is absolutely terrible on that, but to give no option.
But this has been known for years. I know this is.
How about if we just have one speaker at a time? After being recognized. Okay? So Commissioner Simpson, you had the floor right now.
Well, I had it before he.
I'm, I sent my piece on.
All right. Sorry. Commissioner Hendrick, go ahead, please.
When you have it like this, this has been known for years. I mean, I know, I've heard this going on for years. The treasurer should have been keeping track of this. It's been brought up that these were going to expire this year. I, I've known about it for a long time. So this isn't any shock or shouldn't be any shock to anybody. Even the Tifa board should have known about this. This isn't, this isn't a surprise, it's just the fact that somebody wasn't doing their homework on this.
Commissioner Simpson.
Again, I reply with, we're still giving people the option to have a say in it. I, I agree the timing is absolutely terrible. I 100% agree with you that this should have never happened, but the alternative is two, it's one way or another. The 29th, having a special meeting gives some people the option to come. Timing is terrible, but the alternative is they have zero option, zero input, and it automatically expires. And I think that's, that's much worse.
Commissioner Lovett?
I don't think that it's that bad of a date. Not everybody gets a full week off before or after Christmas. When you think we're back to work within a few days and then you're off again for the January 1st holiday. So I think that we would get at least as many people as we have here tonight.
Mr. Hendrick, do you have something else?
No, I guess this is just the, you know, to me, these Tifas have just been misused all along anyway. To me, the money should just go back into the general fund so that the city can use it appropriately and operate the city. That's what it should be used for. It would eliminate a lot of aggravation, but we'll have it, but I can almost guarantee you'll probably have no one there.
So if we have a public hearing, we'll do our, our normal notifications?
It's got to be noticed 20 days before. That's one of the reasons.
Why that drives that date.
Correct. Right. So we'll be able to get it to the voice tomorrow. It'll be in the Wednesday paper, which is the 9th, which means the 20 days before the meeting on the 29th.
Right.
Just want to say that the 29th is on a Tuesday, if you wanted to know what day it was. So I was looking at my calendar, so actually, 29th. As I was looking at my calendar, so actually, twenty-ninth would work with me very well because it's not before Christmas, and got a little bit of time before the holiday, you know, New Year's Day, but I don't know if we're gonna make a vote on it.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, we're just discussing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
All right.
He does make.
I wanna make, do I make a motion?
We already have it.
Or the motion's already on, okay.
Just comments.
All right, just comments, all right, go ahead.
And he does make a point that you may want to make sure that you can actually get a quorum for that meeting?
Yeah. Okay. I agree.
Maybe do a raise, you know, raise of hands?
I know, I'm available.
I'm available. All right. So it sounds like we could get a quorum. I can't speak to the mayor, but. All right, so we have motion and a second. We've had discussion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to eleven, financial business.
I make a motion to approve disbursements including payroll of one hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Support. Motion in support. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr.?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
I see the salvage vehicle fees is brought in for fifteen thousand. Are we still checking into how that's supposed to operate as far as what it can be spent on and?
Yeah, Jim Heslop was gonna take a look at the whole process and procedure for salvage vehicles. I know he's been doing some homework on that. Apparently, it's something where you have a license to be able to do it, it's somewhat something that's done through police offices, and it's something statewide, that they go out, they check vehicles. The way that it works is, they get salvage vehicles from several different cars, piece them together, and issue, I guess, a new clean title for one vehicle that came from pieces of other vehicles. It can be done statewide, it doesn't have to be done just within the limits of Marine City. That's the knowledge that I have of it at this point. He could probably provide you more information.
Yeah, I think I asked him, he still didn't have a whole lot of information. I guess my concern was after seeing all the information in the paper about the issues that Memphis got into, I just wanna make sure we're not gonna get into that same problem. The other thing is, I see the Tifa board is extending the contract for the Strategic Solutions. Now, what, we've had them, what, two years? Five thousand dollars a month for two years, we're gonna extend it now for another through May, and what have we gotten, what, one grant?
I can't speak specifically about how many grants. That was a topic of much conversation at the last Tifa meeting, though, and they did feel that he was making serious progress towards getting this grant for the Vertons, for the Brownfield redevelopment. I believe there were some other things that he had done, and they felt at this time it was compelling enough information to keep him on for a six-month term.
Since my understanding, last time I asked the interim, other interim city manager there, he said they only had gotten us the one grant. So, I mean, at five thousand a month for almost two and a half years, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, that was actually one of the things that they discussed, is that they wanted to see more reporting from him about what he's doing.
Well, I'd like to see it, too, because, you know, we haven't seen anything at all.
Okay. We did get one. Yeah, after we asked the last time.
Yeah, but that's not good enough for spending five grand a month for two and a half years. I see that we're paying another on the Saw Grant project. Is there any end date for when that'll be finished?
I believe Mike Ittrich said that he was gonna have something either by the second December meeting or early January in conjunction with that.
So then we'll know when we have to. Is this, is Tetra Tech gonna also come here to give us a whole presentation on that?
Review of it, they should, yeah.
On when that's, okay. That's it.
Okay. Any other?
Regarding with the grant, how much did he, did he get that grant? How much was that grant? Did he get?
Six hundred and some thousand?
No, it wasn't that high. From what Don told us, it was only like, I don't know, it was like two hundred and some thousand.
You don't have saw?
No, the grant that the Strategic.
So you're looking at two hundred and some odd thousand, if I did my math.
Yep.
Sixty a year, so that's a hundred and twenty, plus another two months, so it's a hundred and thirty thousand.
Hundred and ninety.
Wait, two months, I think. Oh, six months?
Six months.
Oh.
The ME-DC grant the Vertons are up for is over six hundred thousand dollars, though.
I thought you said it was two hundred.
No, I said six hundred.
The one Don had told us before.
Yeah, that's the one they received, but the Vertons, who are building the hotel, are, they've been using them tremendously for the ME-DC, which is, if you remember, when they came to present the project, that was a very critical component to them to follow through that. He's been quite involved with that. If and when they receive that grant, it's over six hundred thousand dollars.
But they haven't gotten it yet.
Correct. But they told us their application isn't even due till the end of the month, so.
So at this point, he's only got us the one grant for.
Yeah, we can certainly get some.
Just the one grant for, what was the one grant that he got it for? Does anybody know?
I don't remember. I remember Don telling us that he got us one grant, and that was about it, but to me, for the cost that we're spending, it's.
It's like, it's a wash, like, we're actually taking a loss, is what I'm saying. You know, I mean, just, you know, I mean, now, if he doesn't come through with the grant for the Vertons, then there's no way of getting out of it. You're stuck with a contract with them for another six months, is that correct?
Yes.
I do have to say, I've been all along, you know, anxious to see something happen with the grant writing, and if you recall, I had asked earlier that we get some reports from Strategic Solutions, and then we got a nice big long sheet, and we haven't heard since. However, it does take a lot of time to get a grant. You don't put somebody in for two months, three months, six months, and expect a grant. And as an example, working with the Safe Routes to School, it, you know, I've been working on this for a year and a half, and now we're finally at the point where we can start writing the grant, and your package is, you know, about that thick of, you gotta answer this question, that question, and come up with this. So I think that's what Tifa was looking at, and seeing that there are a lot of irons in the fire, it's just taking time to get that. And I have to say that Strategic Solutions is going to work with Safe Routes in writing that grant. He's done that before, and that could possibly be another six hundred thousand grant for some infrastructure work with the city.
Commissioner Hendrick?
But a lot of communities have people in their own community that can do the grants. I mean, I know people that do grants all the time, and so, I mean, it's not always that you have to spend a lot of money to do that, you have to educate yourself on the grants, but I think it's still a lot of money when you can find other people to do it for, in a different manner. Anyway, that's it.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carries?
All right, thank you. That brings us to twelve, city managers report.
I attended the Santa Parade, and it was absolutely wonderful. Kudos to everyone for that. It was the first nighttime light-in parade I've ever been to, and absolutely loved it. I was working with Mary Ellen, we got our submittal to the state for the revenue sharing. That was due December first, and we got that in well ahead of schedule. As you may or may not know, the Planning Commission meeting for December fourteenth has been canceled. Next meeting, our next meeting, on December seventeenth, we will have the audit. They will be providing that at the meeting, so unfortunately, you won't be able to have it before the meeting. He will be here to present it, and if for some reason you have questions and want him to come back, he'd be more than glad to do that as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Brings us to thirteen, Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions for you. What did you find out as far as the dual meter issue that we had at the last meeting? Anything?
The sewer meters?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still working on it. Obviously, there's been a couple pressing things that have unfortunately pushed that to the wayside. We haven't forgotten about the people that have those second sprinkler meters, but we're definitely working towards something, and we'll have that to you soon.
Okay. How about the ship dock issue that we tabled? Is that still?
I have not heard back anything about that. I think I saw Mr. Coase here, if he maybe wanted to address that or not.
Sure.
Yes.
Hi, Gary Coase, four thirty, Water Street. We're, we have a plan to move forward with. Our approach has been not to go to the Coast Guard or the Corps of Engineers first, is to go to the people who'll be using it and find out what they need, and then design it, and take it to the Corps and to the Coast Guard for approval. And once that's done, then we can come back to City Council and present the entire concept. We have checked with the insurance underwriter for the city, and not only does he say there's no issue on insurance, but he's excited. He, I guess, a longtime resident, and we've already have tour boat operators who've said they wanna bring people to Marine City if we do this, and they'll drop them off, shop, eat, get back in the boat, and go home. There'll be no parking issue. So that's a positive. And we have a commitment from the Brig Niagara that they will make Marine City their port away from port, which means they'll come here probably six days out of the year, each year, three days outbound into the Great Lakes on their sail training, and three, three days downbound. The other thing associated with that, which is really exciting, is we may be in a position to put some Marine City students on the ship to go out into the Great Lakes, and then they'll, they'll get on the ship here, and they'll just embark here on their way back. So it's, our concept is putting maritime back into Marine City, and it's pretty exciting. We're also working on a concept for day docking on the Bell River, so that we can have pleasure voters come to Marine City and walk downtown and spend their money and go home. No parking problem again, so that's it.
You're solving all our parking problems, boys.
Well, they'll, on that subject, you brought it up, I didn't, but, but as I said to one person who keeps telling me about all the parking problems, when the Vertons have their show, and we're open and everything else, come on down to the theater, and we'll walk one block west, and I'll show you sixty parking places not being utilized. So now, if people can't walk a block, we got a problem. So I don't think that's a parking issue in this town. I think it's absolutely a great town, the way it is, so. That answer your questions?
Yep.
Anything else for the city manager? Who would like to start tonight? Commissioner Privilege? Anybody? No volunteers?
I'll go.
All right.
First, I wanna thank everybody that, the Old Newsboys paper drive there was, the first day was just miserable, all rain, and the volunteers were really good about staying out all day. Sales were down, but, you know, hopefully, we'll make up for that with what we have this weekend. But I wanna thank everybody that did help out and donate to all the people standing out there, because it was a rough couple days for everybody that participated, and it's all for a good cause for the kids. So on that note, there's gonna be a couple things coming up. One, Anita's is going to have a fundraiser for the Old Newsboys also on December ninth from five thirty P.M. to eight thirty P.M. for pizza and breadsticks. It's kinda like a all-you-can-eat thing. It's ten dollars for adults and eight dollars for children, that's for fourteen and under. So come out and support that, because all the, you know, the proceeds are gonna help us for all the kids. The second one, another pizza idea, Dolly's Pizza Marine City on Monday and Tuesday, December fourteenth and fifteenth. Any and all purchases made at the Dolly's Pizza will create money's back to the community. So ten percent of all sales on those two days, the fourteenth and fifteenth of December, will be sent to the old, Marine City Old News Boys and Girls. So try to support everybody locally, and hopefully, we can see it at the fundraisers. Thanks.
Commissioner Lovett?
Okay, I'm looking forward to all the things that are coming up, the Saturday with the Old Newsboys craft show, and Joe Doggs, and the Merry Time Day Christmas. Am I getting things mixed up here?
No, but this'll be out after, that's all over.
Okay. I was seeing some funny eyes there, but it's great to see so many different groups involved. I wanted to give you an update on the Old City Hall, three hundred Broadway. Locks have been a problem. Friends of City Hall got paid for, brought in a professional, professional locksmith, and he looked at the locks, checked them out, and said, number one, they're top-of-the-line locks. Number two, that front door does lock, it just is a special procedure to lock it, and so we are putting a sign up to please not use that door unless it's an emergency. And if someone wants to learn how to set those locks, Bob Lepley has been trained by the locksmith to do that. It's a case of lifting, you know, you're not used to lifting a handle and pulling it in and then locking it down, but anyway, there is a procedure to do that, so that we can be sure those doors stay locked. We're having an open house during maritime days at the Friends of City Hall from one to three P.M. There'll be a Victorian village display there, much like we had during Heritage Days, we had Charles Dickens one, now it's going to be more Victorian display there, and there'll be more than ten trees decorated beautifully in many different ways throughout the building. So we encourage you to come on down and join us for that open house there. Also, the Civic Women's Tour will be coming by the City Hall as well. And let you know that all the bathroom fixtures have been removed, the old fixtures were still in the building, there was still water in some of those urinals and toilets, so those have all been removed, capped, cemented, so we don't have that moisture or that smell throughout the building anymore, because that's been done. We'll be setting up, if anyone is interested in helping us this Saturday, in the morning, starting at ten o'clock, just kinda straightening up, cleaning, and helping the lady who does the displays, helping her get the tree set up, et cetera. So if anyone has time, you're more than welcome to join us. Also, an update on Safe Routes to School. As I mentioned earlier, we're nearing the planning stage now for that. We have the action plan, has been approved by Michigan Fitness, and also has been passed out to the members of the team, members to look at, make sure we have everything there. Mr. Hillfinger from Strategic Solutions is working with us to get the plan itself written, so that should be done by January, February, we should have our ducks in row and get that in motion. It'll be another three to four months before, you know, anything comes through, but the representative from Safe Routes, Michigan Fitness, who's working with us, is really pretty positive that we will be seeing some grant money and seeing some things happen. So we'll be meeting with the Planning Commission at the next meeting to share those plans and ideas with them, so make sure it's part of the master plan. I think there's some things already in the master plan, but to be sure that we're working with the city's master plan as well. So with that, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Malley?
Just a couple things I wanna say, is I had a few comments about the parade, and they, a lot of people came up to me, said, boy, it's a nice Thanksgiving parade, and I kinda chuckled about that, but at least it wasn't frigid cold, and one thing or another is what we used to have, you know, the temperature being one way or another. But I don't mind if we change it to a Thanksgiving parade, because that was, that was really nice, you know, and the lights were all shining, and it was kinda cold, but yet, you know, you have Santa Claus and whatnot in the Thanksgiving parade anyhow. And the other thing I wanted to say, in this past year, that we've been having prayer before the meetings, and I just wanna say thank you. It is meaningful that we acknowledge a superior being into our meetings and giving us guidance, and it's not resent, you know, what I'm saying is, it's appreciated, and I've had people that told me that it's nice to acknowledge, that we acknowledge another, you know, knowing the different churches in the community, as well as by meeting the ministers on the pulpit, is what they've been telling me. So if they need guidance or something, they have an opportunity to see you on the meeting and maybe attend the church. So other than that, I wanted to say thank you.
I also would like to express thanks for the nice job for the Santa Parade, even if it falls early. That is very nice. I would like to remind people that it probably is going to snow sometime this year, and we have to be attentive of our sidewalks and the handicap zones that sometimes get covered over because it's hard to put snow around. The mention you made of the prayer here, we are told at times how important the concept of separation of church and state, this really gets moved around. I think what we have to remember is, it means we do not have a separation from religion. It's not a state-religion, so we are very happy to have this expression to honor, as Mr. Melli said, Commissioner Melli. Thank you. That's enough for tonight.
I don't have any immortal words, like the mayor would normally give us, words of wisdom, but one thing I did notice today for the first time, I happened to go to Anita's to pick up a pizza before the meeting, and saw the lights turned on at the Riverbank Theater. How exciting. Just another marquee lit up downtown. I mean, it's pretty cool stuff, so I'm glad to see all that's happening. It's awesome. With that, be looking for motion to adjourn.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close or adjourn?